First item on the agenda, entertain a motion from council for approval of the consent agenda.
I move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections of any of the open work session minutes as listed? Seeing none, and legislative minutes, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Approval of the consent agenda has been approved. At this time, we have a couple of proclamations here, a few of them really good. Vice President Dodd is going to go to the podium. The first proclamation is for the Fruitland Little League twelve-year-old All-Stars for winning the Maryland State Championship for 2019. So, all of you can stand right over there behind Larry, if you'd like to. And if anyone's taking pictures, keep in mind, you can come out here and take as many pictures you want. You're not gonna, you know, you're not gonna interrupt any of the proceedings, just feel free to take whatever pictures you'd like.
Feel free to bring your cameras out. We'll wait. Is this everybody?
Squeeze together, guys. Squeeze together.
Let everybody get in the picture. You can bring some guys down your side if you want.
Chase.
Make it a little more even.
Good job, Coach.
That's good leadership there. Hey, you're not in District Three, are you? First, I want to congratulate everybody involved with Fruitland Little League. They do great things for our area, just as the rest of the Little Leagues do, and it's great to see you guys here. But I want to ask, weren't you guys here not too long ago? Do you want me to give you a proper, "Good job"? And I said this when you guys left. Where'd you go? Where were you guys when I was managing the All-Star teams? You guys are doing great work. Keep it up.
They weren't born yet, they started to die.
It wasn't that long ago. That was funny, though. So, the first proclamation are for these majors. So, Fruitland Little League Majors All-Star Team, 2019 State Champions, the Maryland State Champions, whereas on July thirteenth, I think somebody snuck in here late. Whereas on July thirteenth, the Fruitland Little League Majors All-Star Team won the District Eight title by defeating rival Berlin in the district championship game, scoring thirty-three runs and only allowing six runs. That's fantastic. Whereas two weeks later, the Fruitland Little League Majors All-Star Team won the state championship title with a score of five to nothing in the state tournament. Fruitland outscored opponents by a margin of twenty-two runs, scoring twenty-five runs, and only allowing three runs. And whereas, led by coaches David Harkins, Corey Shepherd, the team members are Dawson Daniels, Aiden Davis, David Harkins, Chase Hurley, Caden LaFort, Canon Map, Jake McFarlane, Caden McKinney, Cole Mills, Chase Shepherd, and Trevin Whitelock. I hope I didn't leave anybody out. Therefore, be resolved that the Wycomico County Council congratulates the Fruitland Little League Majors All-Star Team on their 2019 Maryland State Title, done this third day of September 2019, signed by all the council members. And I want to point out, as I mentioned, they went to Connecticut, so it didn't end there, so they played some more games and did a good job. So, Coach, would you like to talk about that? Real quick, just tell them what our adventures were.
Well, I'd like to thank the all council members for honoring us tonight. It's great to be here. But yes, these young men, for some of these guys, this was their third state championship in three years, which is an incredible feat for any Little League, let alone certain members. Raise your hands if you're three-time state champions, please. And also, raise your hand if you're two-time state champions. But just would like to say again, thank you. This has been a great group of young men to coach and be a part of with Coach Shepherd. And baseball's excellent down here on the shore, so to win the district is something. To win the district multiple years in a row and get to state championships is fantastic. The team that we lost to in Bristol, Connecticut, was New Jersey, and for those of you who watched the Little League World Series, New Jersey not only got there, but they actually competed very well and had a chance at getting pretty far in the Little League World Series. So, the sting of losing to New Jersey's gone, but the memories will last forever. So, thank you for honoring us tonight.
Thank you, Coach. I think it should also be pointed out that they have team moms that are really big in helping organize a lot of things. And congratulations and thank you to the parents and family members that allowed this to happen. Good work.
Thank you very much. And now, at the podium, we will have the eleven-year-old All-Stars who are going to replace some of these gentlemen, I assume, maybe most of these gentlemen right now. So, you're next in line for the next championship. I can see that. These are the winners of the district title for 2019. So, if you could, come to the podium, and Vice President Dodd will read the proclamation.
We split the team up, make it even. All right, like President Cannon said, they're pretty much next in line because they're ten and eleven-year-olds. How many kids are ten-years-old? You've got some ten-year-olds here. So, this is ten-eleven, and they have minors division, the ten-eleven, they have the majors. So, some kids choose to stay in the eleven-year-olds, and some of the eleven-year-olds choose to be majors. So, keep up the good work, guys, and move on up to intermediate, junior, senior league. Keep playing some baseball, guys. Good work. So, it is with great pleasure that the members of the Wycomico County Council extend the certificate of recognition to the Fruitland Little League ten-eleven team for being the 2019 District Eight Champions. The Wycomico County Council congratulates the members of Fruitland Little League ten-eleven team, Brandon Nadal, Tanner Trudeau, Colby Contreras, Liam Nelson, Logan Chatham, Brody Webster, Camden Lemon, Carter Thomas, Thomas Gormley, I hope I'm pronouncing these right, Tristan Merritt, Colton Gualtney, and Braden Smith, led by coaches John Nelson, Jamie Webster, and Brian Lemon, for their accomplishments for earning the title of District Eight champs for 2019, done this third day of September 2019, signed by the entire county council. Congratulations, guys. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. You can go up there and talk.
Well, for this particular group, the journey started last year. We came up short in districts. We actually have two state champions on this team that competed with Coach Harkins' group two years ago. If you could raise your hands, Thomas Gormley and Liam Nelson was on that team two years ago when we went to Connecticut and competed for that regional, but we did win the state championship that year. We came up short last year, and it was a tough loss for us because we were the best group, and we were the best team in that district championship. We came back together this year luckily because Fruitland, we're deep. We had a lot of twelve-year-olds, so this group was able to form again as eleven-year-olds, and we competed this year, won a district championship this year, and came up short in the state title, but we're looking forward to getting back together next year.
Good work.
Thank you.
All right, guys, you guys can sit down now, and you don't have to stay here because I know school started today, and you guys are probably gonna study tonight as soon as you leave.
Most of you might want to stay, though.
Thank you all.
You see how fast? Thanks. Congratulations.
It was very nice, Larry. Larry.
Hey, Mary. Thank you. Congratulations.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He was teed, I got a real one.
I was blessed to have him to be a part of.
I think I can handle it.
I swear.
I can tell a couple of them are all white, man.
I swear.
Yeah, I can pick them up. I guess he did in New York City.
It's all listening. I can hear the rest.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, there's another coach. Right. Yeah. Right. All right, the next item on the agenda is a very special item. We have a proclamation to Joshua Copeland for singing the final round of the National Gospel Singing Competition, Sunday Best. If I'd known this, I would've had you sing the National Anthem instead of the Pledge of Allegiance. Because I've heard you before, and it's great. I'm pretty sure I've heard you sing the National Anthem before. Wouldn't that be right, I mean, locally?
Yes.
Maybe? Well, okay. Either way, congratulations. Councilman Davis is up there, if you'd like to, and you can invite anybody to the podium that you'd like. And if you're taking pictures, please, you can come up front if you want to. If you're not getting a good shot back there, feel free to come forward.
It gave me a great privilege to present this proclamation to Joshua. I've seen him, I've known him a long time, the family, I mean, he's done great things. I was there when he got married, was reception. Bishop, I didn't know he had that many kids. I was talking to Mandel, I said, "Bishop ain't got a word for name-carrying on him." But anyway, Josh has done some great things representing the community, the county, some of the things on the proclamation doesn't cover, some of the things as his father, he's a great father, family man. I mean, he comes from a singing family, his dad, his brother's the musician, also seen Madison, another singer in the family. So, they come from a great family. It gives me great honor to give you this proclamation. I mean, we all saw you on Sunday Best, even though you didn't win, you won in our hearts. You still.
Whereas Minister Joshua Copeland began singing as a young child when his parents discovered his singing ability after hearing him sing along to a commercial and nurtured his gift by putting him in the children's choir at church. Minister Joshua Copeland has impacted many lives throughout his singing ministry, writing and recording songs on National Gospel Singing, and has performed alongside some of the gospel's greatest. Minister Joshua Copeland auditioned for Sunday Best, a televised gospel singing competition, and was named as one of the top twenty contestants of the show premiering on June thirty of 2019. After weeks of competing against other singers, Minister Joshua Copeland was named as one of the two finalists to compete in the final round of Sunday Best on August twenty-fifth. And like I said, although he didn't win, he won in our hearts. Therefore, be resolved that Wycomico County Council applauds Minister Joshua Copeland for his talents and musical ability and congratulates him on being a finalist on Sunday Best, done this day, the third day of September 2019.
Wow, thank you, guys, so much. Appreciate everything, appreciate all the love and the support from the committee and from the community. Thank you, council, for this honor. To my parents, appreciate you, guys, love you, guys, thank you. Thank you for bringing me to this world. Thank you for always loving me regardless and supporting me, too. My siblings, thank you, guys, love you, guys, I appreciate all the love and hard work that you guys also helped make this day what it is today, and I appreciate you. To my wife, thank you, baby, appreciate everything, all the love and support. Oh, man, you know, all the love and support. I mean, you know, she's been with me through the whole process, and just for her to still be with me at this point, and then you got, you got three kids trying to juggle everything, and I'm just grateful to you, baby. Thank you so much to my church family. Love you, guys, United Faith Churches of Deliverance, to everybody, just thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. This is such an honor, and I'm grateful. Thank you.
We didn't, I didn't get to see that on TV. Do you think we could get one verse of something?
Verse of something? Sure, you can. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Oh, thank, thank you, thank you, Lord. I just want to thank you, thank you, Lord.
Let it be known, I think that's the first time we've been serenaded on the council.
John, you might remember when we was at the Martin Luther King banquet, that's when you heard him sing.
Yes, yes, yes.
Good evening, Mrs. Hurley, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. We have one item on the agenda this evening, and that is Resolution Number One Twenty-Two Two Thousand and Nineteen, declaring eleven lots a surplus property. The county executive has submitted a list of county-owned real property that he desires for the council to declare as surplus. At the last council meeting held on August twentieth, a public hearing was held on the proposed surplus property list, and in accordance with Section Two Two One of the county code, at the next legislative session, which is today, council by resolution may declare that any of the parcels are no longer needed for public use and therefore surplus. If the properties are determined to be surplus, the county executive may dispose of the property by public auction. If the county executive and the county council determine that it is in the best interest of the county to dispose of the property by any other means other than the public auction, then the county executive can seek approval by the county council and can sell the property for a price and under the terms that the county executive determines to be in the county's best interest. If any of the property is not determined to be surplus property, then it cannot be disposed of. The resolution before you is written so that if council determines that the property is surplus, then the property can be disposed of by public auction. If council wants the property to be disposed of in any other manner, then the resolution would have to be amended, and there are six scenarios that are on the council table in which you can do that.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution One Twenty-Two Two Thousand and Nineteen.
I move.
Motion second, discussion. Wayne or Weston, I guess we have both of you listed here. Good evening.
Good evening, Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration.
Any questions from council members?
Joe? Okay. For the benefit of the public and myself, could you explain how the public auction would take place?
We, ideally, we would have flexibility to go auction or realtor on these properties, but we would find a local auctioneer that does real estate and have them listed that way. So, the charter defaults to auction, but...
Would that be an online auction, or would it be a public auction, say, like they would, they sell the property for the tax sale here in the county office building?
We would have to consider our options and see what would reach the broadest audience. I mean, ideally, with any of these, we would get the maximum price, and we'll work with purchasing and see what's the best course of action there.
Would you put a minimum on any of them?
We'll have to look at them individually. In some cases, I think the taxes that were owed, like back when they were acquired from tax sale, we may never recoup that amount, but I do think we want, we want something. I mean, ultimately, we want to back on the tax rolls.
Right.
And they're not doing anything other than costing us maintenance to maintain. So, I would think we would consider a minimum.
Counselor McCain?
My question, I mean, being in the valuation industry, but first and foremost, I mean, we need to know what the property's values are before we go to any sales, so that we can determine whether we're getting, you know, something close to fair market value. Like you said, you know, we want to maximize what we can get out of them. I mean, personally, I'm not really concerned about what method you dispose of them. The, I mean, there's pluses and minuses to all the methods. I mean, public auction could be, you know, can work in your favor, could also work against you. I mean, a lot of times, people don't show up, or you may only get a couple of people there, and, you know, we could have a thirty thousand dollar piece of real estate if we've had it valued, so we know that, and, you know, you might have one person there, and they offer a thousand dollars. You know, so kind of getting to Joe's question, you know, do we have a minimum established? But to establish a minimum, we'd have to, you know, a bare minimum, get, you know, some type of appraisal done from, you know, certified appraisers, so at least we know what values we're dealing with. I mean, as far as the actual disposal method, you know, I'd think, you know, that's the whole reason we have the executive side of the government, you know, I'll leave that up to you all, pick the best method. And unfortunately, as in the charter, defaults to public auction, you know, unless we do some kind of amendment to address that. But, you know, I'd like to see us have all three options on the table, because in some cases, a public auction may be best, it may not. Going with a realtor may be best, it may not, depending on the type of property. And in some cases, just simply a private sale, you know, you get a certain piece of property, you could have an adjacent property owner that has an interest in it, you know, it could, you know, benefit them, benefit the neighborhood by, you know, potentially having just a private sale. But, you know, once again, if we know the fair market value, as long as we're getting that, what method we choose, I don't care.
Sure, and I agree with all of that.
Thank you.
The first step is for council to declare the surplus. And again, we're going to try to get as much possible for each of these parcels, and I think appraising them makes sense. And ideally, again, I hear you about the auction. The original resolution submitted provided flexibility either way. So, again, I think that's the best course of action, is allowing us either private sale to an adjacent property owner, auction, or realtor. Flexibility will help us maximize the amount we get for each of these. But again, they're not generating any taxes where they are now, so there will be revenue generated, whatever is paid for them.
I agree with Councilman McCain. I think it'd be a good idea to find out what the values of these properties are, so that when we do relieve the county of this excess surplus, that we get the best bang for the buck.
Are they encumbered by project open space, any of them?
These projects are not. These were the low-hanging fruit when I went through all the county-owned properties. There's other ones that have strings attached to them or required more research. If you look, of course, the memo attached is dated April, when I submitted them, I think it was the end of last year, 2018, and we submitted the first twelve low-hanging fruit. One of those twelve, part of Baron Creek property, did not have a State Department of Assessments and Taxation number, individual number associated with it, so we could not include it in this round. But we, once we get through the low-hanging fruit, that's when we'll invest the time and energy into looking at other ones, including program open space funds. Do we need it? Specifically with the POS monies, you have to have a property of equal or greater value to transfer that to, if you go the transfer route, or you have to pay whatever you paid previously. And again, these properties are simply the low-hanging fruit. A lot of them were acquired during tax sale or some other reason. We thought we were going to extend a road at some point and acquired it. So, again, these are the easiest ones to put forward, and it would at least pave the way for future properties, once we know what council's comfortable with, with surplusing.
I have a poll question. What would the minimum charge for an appraisal be, say, on just a, I know a couple of these, some of these pieces are very minimal pieces of property with, you know, you couldn't build on, I mean, would it cost five hundred dollars to appraise one, two hundred, or eight hundred?
Yeah, I think particularly the lots, the vacant lots, and some of those have a lot of synergy, they're similar. So, in those cases, I mean, I think you're probably looking at literally under three hundred dollars for properties like that, you know, and any of the ones that have improvements, you know, you could be four hundred dollars, but, you know, you're definitely looking at under, you know, under five hundred dollars for any of these.
Right, okay. Some of them's not worth a lot, we didn't want, end up with more in appraisal than we have.
Right, correct. But at the same time, you want to know that.
Right.
You know, that'd be the advantage of getting evaluation done first.
What is the, maybe Mrs. Hurley or Mr. Taylor, what is the deadline? If the council approves this as is tonight, or even amended, is there an extended, is there a limited period of time under which they have to act? Like, would it be, would they still be allowed to do this three years from now, hypothetically?
To my knowledge, the county code does not address that. I mean, it just talks about the county executive submitting a list each year for council to consider a surplus.
The only reason I ask that, because, you know, I would want to make sure we've tried to take advantage of the best economic period, whereas, you know, where we might be able to sense that values are really high, and people might really be, you know, anxious to purchase these properties. Some of these properties, and I don't know what the realities might be here, but some of the properties could be something we could work towards, some types of veterans' homeownership. You know, I've seen some of these, and especially, depending on whether we could coordinate with the city of Salisbury, because they're, I know they've done a lot of very aggressive work with the veterans.
lot of synergy, they're similar. So, in those cases, I mean, I think you're probably looking at literally under $300 for properties like that, you know. And any of the ones that have improvements, you know, you could be $400. But, you know, you're definitely looking at under, you know, under $500 for any of these.
Right, okay. Because some of them's not worth a lot, we didn't want to end up with more in an appraisal than we have.
Right, you know, it wasn't more than, right.
Correct.
But at the same time, you want to know that.
Right.
You know, that'd be the advantage of getting evaluation done first.
What is the, maybe Mrs. Hurley or Mr. Taylor, what is the deadline? If the council approves this as is tonight, or even amended, is there an extended, is there a limited period of time under which they have to act? Like, would it be, would they still be allowed to do this three years from now, hypothetically?
To my knowledge, the county code does not address that. I mean, it just talks about the county executive submitting a list each year for council to consider a surplus.
The only reason I ask that, because, you know, I would want to make sure we've tried to take advantage of the best economic period, whereas, you know, where we might be able to sense that values are really high, and people might really be, you know, anxious to purchase these properties. Some of these properties, and I don't know what the realities might be here, but some of the properties could be something we could work towards, some types of veterans' homeownership. You know, I've seen some of these, and especially depending on whether we could coordinate with the city of Salisbury, because they're, I know they've done a lot of very aggressive work with the veterans. But, I mean, it might be a possibility to try to see if the property could be donated to veterans in the city of Salisbury, also might, you know, give some type of relief on hookups.
Sure.
To make it possible for a veteran to buy the home, or anyone. I say veterans, you know, those who might be in need. Something to consider.
Well, and John, I think that gets back to the earlier comment, you know, I think in terms of the methods.
Sure.
You know, I'd like to see, you know, to give us as much flexibility, you know, I'd like to see us maybe amend this to say, public auction via realtor or private method of sale that brings, you know, that brings, you know, the best value to the county. You know, the third option would give you that, you know, would address your comment right there, you know, right, if someone wanted to work with a veteran group or something, right, that would fall under that third category.
Mr. Taylor, was that, would that be number seven of the options you gave us?
Could be modified to two.
I hadn't thought of the veterans' option, but it could possibly fit into one of those. But, and I think the resolution tonight could possibly be amended to, if you want to have a veterans' preference, to allow for that.
Well, I wouldn't even say we would have to establish this with veterans. It could be some type of homeless initiative period, but...
Right, that's too narrow to say that.
But maybe as Councilman McCain says, maybe amend it to include also private sale.
Just, are you thinking of tonight's resolution or amendment of the code? Which, I mean, which one are you thinking of?
I was thinking of, I was thinking of the resolution. I wasn't going to get into a code amendment right here.
Well, if you could let me know specifically what you want to say, I mean...
Well, I don't know what I want to say. I want to know what, I do, I can tell you what I would like the end to be. Whereas, we would have the option as a county not to be restricted to just auction or realtor sale, but also to allow a transfer for private...
If anything is going to be done other than by a public auction, we'll have to amend it. I mean, that's, so we'll have to do that.
Agreed, well, that's what we're asking. We know that.
What would be the best terminology for that?
Well, if you look at scenario number two, scenario number two says all parcels are declared surplus, which I think we're in agreement on that. And then the second part of that, it must be sold by different, if this is, says different private sale methods. But then we can insert the method below. So, we could put, you know, item one, we could say public auction. Item two, we could say via realtor. And item three, we could say private method of sale.
Well, would you have to, would you have to, like, restrict that to some nonprofit status as opposed to private sale?
Well, we don't want to necessarily do that either. Like, the one example Weston gave, you know, what if it was the neighboring property owner, and, you know, they're willing to pay fair market value, and it might be the only interested party that we're aware of, and they're...
The one property that didn't make this list due to the SSTAT information is not accessible by public access. And it's adjacent to a property where it would make sense to sell to that specific owner. So, that's a case where we would like that option for that property. I can't really see, you know, maybe the, maybe some of the obscure ones, like the Red Hill Lane property, that isn't developable, and that may be just an adjacent property owner is the best course of action.
Final concern is something may be construed as not...
Part of the problem here is we're really circumscribed by our code, and that is the problem. And I was actually going to say, after we got through the general discussion tonight, that, you know, you might want to consider changing it. I will tell you that there are some counties that just don't have anything like this in their code. They just, the properties come up, and they decide on the spot how they want to dispose of them. And that might be, you know, the most flexible way of doing it. There are other options, there are other counties that do have provisions. I've only found one that has anything similar to ours, that is really, it's a really tight, we're in a box. And either, you know, we public auction, or we have to specify specifically how otherwise you want to do it.
Well, we would have two options then, I guess. One would be to, if the council chooses to approve this as is today, we could do such and possibly bring back a, or introduce an amended resolution in one of the next couple of meetings that we have. That would amend this resolution and also amend the code.
Well, the problem...
Or we would table this, and then we would do...
Two separate animals.
Yeah, there's another aspect of our code, unfortunately. And what that says is that after the public hearing, which we had at the last meeting, you have to do your declaration of surplus, if you're going to declare it a surplus, at the very next meeting, which is tonight.
Okay.
And that's another reason why we might want to change the code.
Okay.
Because it really, it's a tight box. That's the problem.
Appreciate that. That's important.
Yes, it sounds to me like, what if we amend it? Because we have to address the properties we got before us. We're not going to be able to change the code this evening, obviously. You know, that's another animal.
Can we legally amend a resolution that's in violation of the code?
I think the problem is, under this particular section of the code, it says you have to make your declaration tonight.
I understand that.
And I think that amending it afterwards would be risky. I mean, I think the best, if it were me, if there are some properties that you don't want to just go to straight public auction with, probably the best thing tonight is to remove them from the resolution and come back again. Now, you'd have to start...
We wouldn't know which ones those might be. All we're trying to do is broaden this a little bit to allow some flexibility, though.
Which has been done in the past.
Yeah.
So, yes.
I just had a question for Mr. McCain. So, having an appraisal, would that, that would tell you if the land was able to be perked, or if there was a septic?
Well, that may or may not. I mean, getting your, they're experts in valuation, I mean, they have to rely on, you know, the Health Department, Planning Department, and other people to give them information as far as the quality and potential of the property.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Cannon, could council approve the properties tonight that they want to declare surplus? And then if the public auction method does not turn out to be the best method, then the county executive could come back before council and ask for permission to dispose of it in another manner?
That might be the best solution, to try to move forward with it as it is now. And then, I think if the administration sees some benefit to what Councilman McCain has suggested, then I would encourage them to come back to the council. However, we might have to do it, whether it's with a resolution and legislation for the code, however it has to be done.
Yeah, because I think the charter just says, goes to public auction, they don't have to, I mean, are we in agreement that they don't, I mean, I know Laura or Mr. Taylor, I mean, do they have to take the best offer at public auction, or can they...
What's in the county executive's...
Let me just read from the code, that might be the best way. It says that county property having been determined to be surplus shall be disposed of by public auction as provided for herein unless otherwise stated. And the otherwise stated, of course, is to do it other than by public auction. So, the problem is that if you don't do it, if you don't otherwise state some method, then what it says is it shall be disposed of by public auction.
Well, then we can't.
You know, that's the difficulty. You know, that's the difficulty with the code. It's a tight code. Why it was written this way, it was years ago, I'm sure, but to me, in today's environment, it just doesn't, it's not very reasonable.
We can amend it. Can we amend it to basically, broad, I guess you would call it a broad amendment, to give the county executive's office the leeway to dispose of it to the best of their ability?
I think that the way it's written, it either has to be by public auction, or it has to be by some other method, as it says here.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, you can do that on a particular property. You could do some other method than public auction.
Basically tell them, okay, either do it by public auction, or the best means you see fit. Can we amend it that way?
I don't think that fits what the code says. You can try it, you can try it. I mean, I'm not saying that...
I would suggest that we try to move forward with it as is, because we know it's in line with the code.
Yeah.
And again, if the administration wants to open this up to a broader, a broader series of objectives, then maybe at that time, they can come back to the council if they want to, with a resolution, or the process that's going to be necessary to amend the code and to amend this resolution at the same time.
Yeah, I mean, I would certainly think you might want to think about amending the code under any circumstances. Because as you can see, it's just a very tight box we're in.
I was surprised it said "shall" instead of "may." I just didn't, that, to me, was a limit, limited the process itself. Okay, any other discussion?
What happened to the property that was on Beaglin? Didn't it have a Beaglin Park address?
Over at City Road.
Yeah, yeah, that's the Old Ocean City property. It's sort of at the corner, and I think it had a Old Ocean City Road before that section of Beaglin came through.
Okay.
So, that, I think that was the history.
I have one more question. Is any of these properties in the city of Salisbury?
Several, I believe.
Will they, will they have...
But I would have to check where the line is, like the wood in Delaware Avenue, there's a line that sort of crosses between...
Will they have city taxes attached to them to be settled for the new purchaser?
That I don't know. If they're in the county's name, there would be no city taxes.
Oh, okay.
And all of these are in the county's name right now. So, they may have had them back when, but that must have gotten settled or written off.
Makes sense.
Councilman McCain, you feel comfortable with maybe moving forward as is?
Well, yeah, I definitely want to see us move forward this evening.
Yeah.
But I think certainly, long-term, I would definitely suggest coming back with a, you know, a broader proposal, so we can, I think everybody's in sort of agreement, we want to see as many options available as possible, as well as you all. So, I think, you know, the code does kind of box us in, so I would certainly suggest coming back to us with a, for long-term purposes, to just change the code, and that way we don't have to deal with this every year, we just have to determine whether they're surplus or not.
I did have one person contact me about one of these parcels. Who would be the contact person in your office to get in touch with if they wanted to know what was going on with it?
If you want to have them call for me, I'll make sure that they're part of the process.
Any other discussion? Josh?
Weston, we did, I was in a meeting this afternoon, and they were, we were basically discussing pocket parks or other parts throughout the county where the municipal areas don't, you know, they don't have any kind of parks. A lot of the questions came towards, could we have more parket poc, pocket parks? Or smaller parts towards, you know, West Road, or certainly, a lot of these properties would be in the middle of that as a way to lift other communities up. So, I said I was going to try and follow up and find more information and follow up with you guys, but that might be, I don't know what our process is of currently evaluating which one of these would be good for those kinds of things, but there's certainly a lot of interested folks in the communities, and they're already having meetings regarding how can we do that with county properties that are what many would consider in the city, but they're actually not in the city.
Sure. I'm probably going to butcher the acronym, but there's a LPPRP that Steve Miller, Director of Wreckin Parks, brings forward, and it's a countywide park plan. And that looks across the county where there's, what you're kind of getting to is, is there a gap in parkland in a certain area? And what was mentioned earlier, I think it's Home for the Heroes. I attended something in Sharp Town where they did a veteran home. We can reach out to those organizations, we can reach out to Wreckin Parks and look at that. You know, they would, of course, have to budget for maintaining and what would go into improving a park in one of these lots. And then for the Home for the Heroes, just see where they are, and are they looking for a donation versus a private purchase? We can look at that, just as options, and if we think that's something worth bringing forward, we'd be glad to divert a property or to that direction.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 122-2019 say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Weston.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Good evening, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening. One item tonight for introduction, Legislative Bill Number 2019-06, an Act to amend Chapter 196 of the Waucomico County Code titled Stormwater Management to add Article 8 to be entitled illicit discharges and to renumber existing Article 8 titled miscellaneous provisions to become Article 9. Mr. Dallas Baker is here.
Attained a motion from council to introduce Legislative Bill Number 2019-06.
Does it move?
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works. So, we discussed this previously at a work session, I believe. This is part of the requirements for the county's municipal separate storm sewer system permit. I'm going to call it the MS4 permit. It allows us to go on to properties and inspect storm drain outfalls, detect if anything illegal is being dumped into the storm drain, and then track that down to its source to stop that dumping.
Any questions for Mr. Baker?
Wouldn't the state already have that right if they seen something illegally being dumped in a drain or ditch?
If you'd like.
The state probably would, but we don't, and we're required to monitor our own system.
So, if you saw something in there, you wouldn't be calling the state to find out what it was, or if it was illegal, or anything like that?
You can. I know we've received calls before about locations where people observed illegal dumping, and it was on state property, and the state, you know, afforded those concerns onto the state, and they sent their own personnel out. I suspect what they're probably doing is, but the state doesn't have the resources to have their folks inspect state property and county property and local municipal property. So, they're trying to delegate that authority to the various other government agencies underneath them.
So, what are you considering to be hazardous material? Just because we had this come up in Sharp Town, I don't know if you're familiar with, they had some issues with possible high levels of formaldehyde and acetone, and so...
Yeah, so there's common things that they'll test. For instance, they'll test for the pH of the water to see if it's too acidic or too basic. They'll test to see if there are soaps present, which is usually indicative of some car wash that's discharging into the storm drain that should be discharging into the sewer. They'll test for coliforms to make sure that no one's sewer system is accidentally tied in. I can get you a list of all the specific things that we test for when they get it through, if you'd like, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great if you don't mind.
Okay.
Appreciate it. I'll forward that on to the Commissioner of Sharp Town.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of introducing Legislative Bill Number 2019-06, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion's carried. Legislative Bill Number 2019-06 has been formally introduced.
You can have a public hearing on October 1st at 6:00 p.m.
February 1st. Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
My name's John Palmer. I live on Star Road in Delmore, Delaware. And first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Cannon for giving any consideration to the veterans for any housing. It's always a great thought. I remember times when veterans were given very little consideration, and now things have changed, and I really appreciate that. So, thank you. Secondly, I see in your agenda where you're going over the procedures for fulfilling the vacancy on the Board of Education, and I'm glad you're getting that now instead of waiting until it's needed again, because that was a real mess, and I hope we don't have to put everybody through that again. So, thank you for doing that. Third, I wasn't here for a couple of the work sessions, but I did want to just say a couple of things about it. One of them was that bill for the sprinkler system. Now, if I remember, that bill was not a standalone bill. I don't think they thought it could pass on its own, because there wasn't a lot of popular support for it, except in some special circles. So, it was put in with an environmental bill, and then it passed. And it has caused, I think, a lot of hurt to single-family construction, especially new... I don't think they thought it could pass on its own because there, there wasn't a lot of, uh, popular support for it, except in some, some special circles. So, it was put in with an environmental bill. And then it passed. And it has caused, I think, a lot of hurt to single-family construction, especially new families with lower incomes and they're just getting started. So, uh, anything you can do to, uh, advance changing this bill to making that, uh, optional, I think would be a, a great help to the county and help to build our, uh, our base. So, anything you can do, I would really appreciate that. Finally, uh, I haven't been following real closely about this sludge tank that wants to be put out on the west side of town. And when I, when it was brought up on a, on the Google and I looked at it, it was just a roadmap. And it, and I looked and I seen the location and it didn't, didn't mean much to me. I haven't been over in that section in the county in 25, 30 years. So, uh, then when I pulled up the topography, I started seeing all of these rooftops and homes that are near that location. So, my interest got piqued a little more. So, then I rode over there. And that place has really changed in the last 25, 30 years. There's some beautiful homes out there and a lot of people out there. And I don't know what the influence of this type of a tank or operation is going to have in that area, but I ask that you look really close at it to see what's going on and consider everything in, in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. And I'd like to note that, uh, Mr. Palmer is also, uh, one of our elected officials with the Wackamiko County Board of Education, as well as is Mike Murray, who is here tonight. Thank you, gentlemen. I did say Board of Education, right? Sometimes I say a Board of Elections. Depends on the night.
Mary Ashanti, President Wackamiko County, NAACP and a citizen of the county. I really didn't have anything to say until Mr. Palmer mentioned about sludge and homes and things of that nature. I want to piggyback on what he said, and my reason for that is, last month I visited Somerset County and it was evident that the county commissioners were not looking out for the citizens of that county. Back on Backbone Road, it's a cluster of a lot of, uh, what I call factory chicken houses, uh, around beautiful homes. Homes that were there before all those places were put up. So, I'm asking you in Wackamiko County, um, be cognizant of that. Those people are there. Be cognizant of what you're putting in their neighborhood. There must be, Wackamiko County is large. There's a lot of open space where there are not any homes. Some of these things need to be put out there where they're not homes, probably never going to be homes. So, please, uh, you know, continue to protect the citizens of Wackamiko County, uh, in, in environmental issues.
Thank you, President Ashanti.
I also want to address the sludge issue. My name is Cynthia Darty. I live on Porter Mill Road in Hebron, Wackamiko County, Maryland. I don't know how many of you read comments in, uh, associated with, um, blogs. Some of them have not been very complimentary to the, the county, uh, council. I want to assure you that that did not come from, from us. We are very grateful that you have been listening to us. Our issue is with a sludge tank being permitted to be built among us. We disagree with planning and zoning code interpretation and the way the permit was issued. A couple of weeks ago, one of our members was complimented by somebody at Planning and Zoning for respecting the process. That process is becoming increasingly difficult to respect. Before this permit was issued, complaints were being called in about the odor and the flies. It was affecting neighborhoods in the town of Hebron, children at West Side Intermediate and the neighbors near Field on Porter Mill Road near Route 50. It was a known problem to the county. The president of the Hebron, uh, Town Commission is also inspector with the planning and zoning. When we learned about the plans to build the tank, we bombarded this county, the county's executive office, the Health Department, the Maryland Department of Environment, Maryland Department of Agriculture, Planning and Zoning, and anyone else we could think of to let them know about our fears and our opposition. No one in any of those departments can say they didn't know the neighbors were against it. Why was this allowed under an application for a residential plan review? This is nothing, there is nothing customary about this monster of a tank. It hold, will hold three million gallons. It will be the half the size of a football field. It will be 20 feet tall, uh, over 20 feet tall and it will be open. We don't believe the DAF storage tank memo from Mr. Meadows to Mr. Culver accurately describes the situation. A one million gallon tank on a century farm with five residents within a half mile of it, each of them related to that farming operation, cannot be compared to a three million gallon tank with at least 24 residents on Porter Mill and Regan Road within a half a mile of it. That is a very conservative estimate. I'm sure the people in Apple, Rewastaco, Mill Branch and Deerfield would also be affected by the traffic and the flies and the odor. The proposed site is on approximately 85 acres. However, it is within 200 yards of homes on Porter Mill and Regan Road. Of course, no one has complained about the million gallon tank. The few who live around it are part of the farming operation and they were asked about it before it was transformed from a cow manure storage tank into a tank that contains this sludge. There may be times when the three million gallon, uh, tank holds, will only hold residential sludge, but nobody wants an empty garbage truck parked in their driveway. And that's about what it amounts to. It will still stink and it will still draw flies. Not addressed in this memo is the tra- or the truck traffic it will generate. We estimate it's, it will take 500 trucks to load it. And I, I think everybody agrees with that figure. And they say 500 trucks. Well, it's not 500 trucks. The trucks have to go to the tank, five, that's 500. Then they have to leave that location. They're not left on the lot. That's a thousand. Then when the spring comes, they have to come back, unload it and take it to the, and take it to the fields. That's 500 to get to the tank, 500 to leave the tank. So, you're talking about 200, no, I'm sorry, 2,000 additional opportunities for a truck to pass your property. Regan Road and Porter Mill Road are not meant for that. There are a number of blind curves, particularly on Regan Road, which I believe will be the main access for coming from Valley Protein onto that property. It would be the most, uh, the closest. All of this traffic isn't spread out over a year's time. It will be during the winter when it can't be spread and during the intense time of spring field preparation. So, it's not going to be an additional five trucks a day over a year. It'll be a lot more than that over a short period of time. The permit itself is questionable. I only hope if I ever need a permit, it will be approved as quickly as this one was. According to the application and the permit itself, zoning, building forest conservation, building Health Department permit, building storm warning manage, storm water management, signed off or approved the permit the same day it was submitted, May 7th. Our Mardele High School graduates seem to be better able to calculate area and read a map than the experts at planning and zoning. This permit needs to be rescinded. We would request a moratorium on any, on the building of sludge tanks until this is all sorted out. In the future, a sludge tank should require a special exception permit, which would be open, which would open it up to public comment and any adverse effects that it might have the neighbors, on the neighbors around it, rather than the way it was done now. I think that's all I, I just want to address the sludge issue and I, I do appreciate you all listening. We are not bad mouthing, we're not bad mouth on anybody. There would be more of us here, but there are 70 of us meeting in Mardele at a, in a meeting concerning this. Thank you all very much for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Seeing none. Counsel comments? Joe?
Well, um, with all the young folks in tonight, um, about the Little League reminded me that, um, school is back in session, so there'll be a lot of school buses on the road, a lot of kids walking to school. So, um, I want to remind everybody to, um, drive cautiously and, um, watch out for the kids, or future leaders. And watch out for Ernie. He's the one who's driving one of the school buses too.
Councilman McCain?
Yeah, a couple of comments, uh, actually in response to the comments that we just made at the podium, um, Mr. Palmer's comments and Mrs. Shini's and Cynthia's comments. You know, you all three talked about three different sort of angles regarding this issue, but you're really saying the same thing. You know, Mr. Palmer, you had talked about, you know, how much that area had changed in 25 years. And, you know, Mrs. Shani, you talked about the inconsistency of use, which is actually a basic valuation concept, consistency of use. And Cynthia, the issues you brought about with a special exception and so forth, you know, these are all issues that as a county we can address via zoning. You know, like Mr. Palmer, you said, you know, how much that, you said how much that area's changed in 25 years, but our ag zoning code has not changed in 25 years. And that's what we need to get up to date. You know, that, a lot of these issues would not be before us in the situation they are now if we had a more contemporary, uh, ag zoning classification. You know, our county, the bulk of our land area is, is, is zoned ag, but ag's very different in, in different parts of our county. You know, obviously our county varies very much from the east to the west, to the south, to the north, you know, and so forth and near our municipalities. So, uh, you know, that's something that has been talked about at this council. We've had a work session with planning and zoning and hopefully, you know, we're going to see that move forward, forward as part of this whole process. Uh, just real quickly, you know, a couple of other notes, uh, I, I don't normally dress in purple, uh, but Wackamiko goes, goes purple and, uh, there's been quite a few events going on in the county. It's great to see the, uh, uh, you know, all the things that are being done, uh, to fight addictions and so forth. And, uh, uh, just Saturday night, Shore Birds, uh, had an event. Several of us were at, were at that event. Uh, Mr. Culver threw out the first pitch. It was, I'll call it a, I'm not going to call it a fastball. It was a, I'll, I'll call it a straight change. It was a little, little high inside, but it was a, uh, he did a nice job of getting things started and, uh, and a really big event we had last week was the back to school, uh, event, uh, at the Civic Center. Uh, uh, they had a, a sea of purple. Every single person in that Civic Center was wearing purple. And, uh, you know, every educator and everyone associated with their education system, uh, was there wearing their purple. And, uh, they had Ron Clark, who, if you're not familiar with Ron Clark, he's, uh, often referred to as America's number one educator. But he was, uh, you know, having somewhat of his stature at Wackamiko County speaking was tremendous. I mean, he gave an hour and a half. He, he ran out onto the stage. And if this guy didn't energize you, something's wrong with you. Uh, I mean, he definitely, when people left there, they were energized. And, you know, he encouraged people to think out of the box and I guarantee you today, being the first day of school, there were probably a lot of educators that did something different in their classroom today because they were sitting in that Civic Center listening to Ron Clark's presentation. So, uh, you know, it was, uh, a great to see someone with that much energy and, you know, kudos to the Wackamiko Education Foundation and the other folks that helped sponsor that, along with Greater Salisbury to make that happen.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman McCain. Councilman Hastings?
Uh, yes. First of all, uh, congrats again to Weston and Annie on their, I'm glad to hear the twins are doing well. I'm a twin also. I highly, uh, it's the best way to grow up, like I have a twin sister and a twin brother. The other thing, I also wanted to correct Cynthia. She said that there was 70 people in Mardele. It looks like it's closer to 80 or more. I'm looking at a picture right now with the Porter Mill situation. And, uh, that meeting is going on, started at 6:30. This is a big issue. We should address it. I've, I've said before that we need to have a moratorium. I say it again now. I think we need to, we, we likely need to have a moratorium on something of this size. I've gotten more calls about it and that's where I'm from, so I, I hear it more, but, you know, that, this is an issue that I think we need to find, uh, a resolution to and, uh, eventually, uh, change our own zoning. Last thing I'll say, uh, is the Folk Festival, National Folk Festival. Anybody who's walked in probably sees all the stage and, and saw what was happening, but this is going to be a big deal. They should really call it the International Folk Festival. Okay, 'cause it's, uh, given the acts that are going on. It's a really special thing for our community and I really hope the folks get out. I've gotten a lot of, a lot of people are going to be there. I don't have any projections around 80,000 people or so coming to town. That's a big deal for us and, um, not going to want no, no hurricanes, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, um, Ackley?
Um, I, I just wanted to speak to the-
Pull your mic closer, please.
Sorry.
It's a little hard to hear you, Dan.
Is that better? I wanted to speak to the sludge tank issue that is in my district and I have spent quite a bit of time with the citizens who are at the meeting tonight and they made me aware that there was a meeting tonight. I have been there to the site with the sludge tank and I do have some concerns of the process on how this was moved forward. I don't, I don't know what the answer is. I don't know if we maybe need a program appraisal to make sure that we are following a procedure that everyone's on the same page because there's several different entities here. You're talking about the Department of Agriculture, M.D.E., the county. We need to have a consistent flow with permitting. So, that's just something that I, I, I wanted to put out there that I think we need to strongly consider. I also had a few requests to have, um, some publications done in Spanish. And so, I don't know if it's a possibility to have a translator, but I do post things that are relevant to the community in Spanish and I don't know Creole. So, and we don't currently have a Creole translating service. Just something to think about if, if we could, if we could, um, possibly get that on an agenda. And then finally, good news is, Mardele, the township of Mardele, applied for a grant and they were awarded the grant. They currently have their own grant writer and are doing very well with it. So, kudos to them. They, they've kind of taken that, taken that lead and are doing a great job.
Thank you. Mr. President, Don?
Yes, um, I do want to thank everybody for coming here and Cynthia, thank you for attending our meeting instead of the meeting that 80 people showed up to. And thank you for your kind words, 'cause, um, we have caught a lot of grief from this and we didn't know anything about the process. Unfortunately, it takes situations like that for us to make change. So, um, I think you see that everybody is concerned about that situation over there. And, um, we are going to talk about it and we're going to see what we can do, um, to, um, assist the citizens over there. I'm sure any, everybody sitting in this room wouldn't want to be living next door to that sludge tank either. Thank you for saying the kind words that you did with us. That today we gave, um, proclamations to a, a room full of kids and some people may not realize it, but I, I- but I, I think that goes a long way to those kids, I think it means the world to them. A couple of months ago, we did the same thing because they won a championship then as well, and they remember it, and they're always going to remember it. And I think that's going to make good character for those kids in the future. I think they're going to be good students, I think they're going to be good athletes, and they're definitely going to respect adults, so I'm very appreciative of kids that are very aggressive in sports like that, so many kudos to them. Next week, I don't think anybody mentioned it, but I think next week is Delmarva Bike Week. I guess the Shorebirds will still have the event there, even though that they're in the playoffs, so you're going to see a hundred thousand plus motorcycles coming through our area, and they're going to be spending money at the hotels and at the restaurants, so it's usually a good thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
I would like to say one other.
George?
For the benefit of folks that talked about the sludge tank, I did talk to Ms. Early today, she has contacted MDE and the Department of Ag to find out what the situation is over there. I understand both those entities have been involved somewhat, so the council is following up on that. Hopefully, they'll, they didn't get back to you today, but they will be getting back to you, I suppose. You're going to call tomorrow if you don't hear anything from them, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Under presidential comments, I wasn't aware that this was an open tank. The only thing I've seen, and, and the council was taken by surprise with this just as much as the public, the only thing I've seen is a picture which showed a closed tank, so I wasn't aware one way or the other. But the first thing the council did, once, once the public came, brought it to our attention, is that we made certain that we, we had planning and zoning review it to make sure everything was done, the permit was issued in the proper fashion. We asked legal to make sure that they reviewed it, to make sure it was done in proper fashion, so that, that's pretty much what our options are, and the only, the only direction that we can take in regard to trying to see how we could possibly find any type of measures that were taken that maybe were inappropriate, that we might be able to then take action. So far as it is now, we, we have been told that everything was done in proper fashion, as Joe said, and maybe that might not be the case. So if there's a window there for the council to take action, then we certainly will take action. A lot of people think that, you know, well, why don't you just have a moratorium, stop it right now? Even if we were to establish a moratorium tonight, we could not necessarily stop that exact project from occurring. They, they would have every right to sue the county, and they would probably win based on the fact that it would be grandfathered in, no matter what, you know, no matter what we did. So we'll have to see whether or not there's an open window. Now, we could create a moratorium to, to stop any future, and that may be something that we will consider, and consider very strongly. But as far as this initial project, hopefully, we'll, we'll find some, there may be some bump in the road where we can possibly intercede and do what we can to try to, to, to help everyone with that. But as it is right now, you know, we are trying to take whatever measures that we can to address it from, from where we are. As I understand, it doesn't come before the council unless they have a special exception, and that's why it went to planning zoning, it stayed in planning zoning, it came out of planning zoning. And it wasn't something that had to have been brought to the attention of the council. If it had, if they needed a special exception, that's something that would have probably gotten more public attention and could have been possibly addressed in a different fashion. Outside of that, as, as was mentioned earlier, the National Folk Festival is coming. They do need volunteers, so if you'd like to volunteer, it can be kind of fun. They need volunteers for what they call the, like, the Bucket Brigade, where you go around and you simply have a bucket and you ask for donations. You know, just, it's, it's very, it's kind of a lot of fun. I mean, I remember last year when I was there, and they just walk around and then they just ask, hey, do you want to make a contribution? And it raises a lot of money for the Salisbury Festival, it's an integral, integral part of their success. So if you would like to help volunteer, contact the City of Salisbury and let them know if you'd like to help with the Bucket Brigade and just simply walk around during the festival, doesn't change your, your day much, you just walk around and at the same time try to get contributions from the, the people who are attending. So that being said, entertain a motion if I could to adjourn so that we can go into open work sessions.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Meeting's adjourned. First item on the open work session agenda, Mr. Baker, you're coming back. Cody Cox Drainage Cleanup Project.
Excuse me again?
Yes, sir.
So, this is a request from Public Works to reallocate the funding that was available for drainage improvements. It was initially put into the contractual services account for roads last year, in two thousand nineteen by the council. It was roughly an extra seventy thousand dollars with the intention that it was going to be used towards drainage projects. We have been using those funds to design and permit the Cody Cox cleanup. Plans got finalized back in December, sent in for, December of two thousand eighteen, sent in for permits, and we got, didn't get the last one from the Army Corps of Engineers until June twenty-fourth of two thousand nineteen. Now, we needed all those permits in place before we could bid the project out. We have to bid the project for at least twenty days. We got it on June twenty-fourth, which was six days before the fiscal year ended, and the funds went back into the account of wherever unspent money goes. Sorry, I'm not, not familiar with that, that specific account, but we have the plans ready. We're asking to have those funds reallocated to, again, the same account that we, that we allocated to in two thousand nineteen, but this time for FY twenty, and then we can go ahead and get this project bid out and on the street and get those, get that branch cleaned up and start improving some drainage in the county.
Questions from House Murphy?
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Are there any, have we, have we pursued any type of funding from the state on this?
Not for this particular project, no. Most of the grant funds that we have been applying for have been for some of the phased improvements out there to the Pratt Road projects.
Mm-hmm. Does this, I always get mixed up with the WIP program, does this, does this, the funding that we spend for this, does that, is that applied towards our WIP program at all?
No, this is not a WIP project. This is strictly going in and cleaning out the debris, the down trees, that kind of thing to improve the flow. What we've seen through the, the Cody Cox branch...
Right.
South of Morse is that there's just a lot of obstructions to the flow pathways. There's box springs and shopping carts, and like I said, there are down trees, and the intention is to, to pull that stuff out of the way, to clear the pipes out, so that when we do get these heavy rains, the water's not being dammed up behind these obstructions and flooding people's homes.
Right.
Just a point of clarification, the only way to transfer the funds, if, if you wish to transfer the funds, is to move the funds out of contingency. Because when the year end closed out, we couldn't encumber those funds for the reason that Dallas gave you, so that money is going to revert to the fund balance. So if we want to act on this now, the money would have to come out of the twenty, twenty nineteen contingency account.
It says that seventy-four hundred's been spent on the project, is that part of that seventy-nine, three-seventy?
Yes, so my understanding was we, there was the additional seventy-nine that was put in at the beginning of FY nineteen, the seventy-four hundred represents the cost for the design and the permitting for the project.
So at the end of that fiscal year, you had seventy-two thousand dollars?
Yeah, there was, there was, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to question you on the stuff that you're taking out of there, mattresses and whatever garbage is...
Yeah, and down trees, yes.
Yeah, and grocery carts, and I know Councilman Davis has been involved in the cleanup efforts, I know it's been going on fifteen to twenty years. What measures are being taken to try to prevent people from using that as a dump?
That, I, I don't have, nothing that's involved with this project, I, I don't have a solution to preventing people from...
We're going to keep doing this, keep cleaning it up.
Larry, most of it is behind residents, most of Cody Cox, it runs behind the residents, so most of it is down trees, as you said. Mostly like the debris is on the ends, down on the end on Road Street by the church, most of that, but most of it is down debris, trees and stuff in it, in the ditch, so. So a lot of it's not trash and stuff in it, it's most of it...
I know they have cleaned up a lot of trash out of there in the past.
I spent a full day there with Cherie Sample Hughes.
We did, that Saturday?
Yeah, yes, yeah, and probably about thirty or forty other people, and Public Works was there with their vehicles, and we spent a whole day cleaning that place up.
Well, that is intention, once they go through and clean up, we're going to do another cleanup around there.
Yeah, but, I mean, Councilman, Vice President Dodd makes a really good point, it'd be nice to have some structures in place and in coordination with the city, we should try to do something to keep people from throwing stuff in there in the future, I don't know, because it's, it's a heavily flooded area. I, I know it was, the storm before last, it was, a couple of years ago, it was, the whole Delaware Avenue, Road Street area was completely flooded.
Mm-hmm. So...
Mr. Cannon, just to, just to follow up on what Mr. Strasburg said...
Yes.
I think this would take a budget amendment, wouldn't it? For the twenty-twenty budget, Wayne, to get it into the...
Just a resolution to transfer the money out of contingency to this project.
Go into the twenty-twenty budget, I would think.
We generally just do a resolution, authorize and transfer it.
I think what he's saying is that he wants to use FY nineteen contingency, and that would be done by resolution.
I get confused by this sometimes, why wouldn't we just take FY twenty contingency? I mean, you know, I guess no, because we're in nineteen now. Yeah, I, okay, good, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
I have a question. Have you looked into any of the, the rural infrastructure grants that EPA has?
I'm sorry, the what?
The rural infrastructure.
Uh, no.
I'm saying rural, because that's my, my, that's my accent, are you?
Uh, no, not, not for this project. We get regular emails from several of the funding agencies, MDE, EPA, we've gotten emails from the governor's office regarding funds available, and, you know, we're always applying for, for grants. It, the one that I, I think you're talking about, the rural development through USDA, I believe that's more for the, you know, construction of water and sewer, but it, it might have a stormwater component that we can certainly check into.
This one is through the EPA.
Through EPA?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we can certainly take a look at it.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, Mr. Baker, it looks like you're done for the night, aren't you?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dallas.
I will, okay.
Next item on the work, open work session agenda is the Wycomico County Fund Balance Policy, Mr. Strasburg, I know.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just by way, just by way of background, Laura and I had been discussing this and felt that it would be a good idea to revisit the resolution that we had sent over some time ago, and I, I think the county really has to be mindful of some undercurrents that we're facing right now. We still don't know what the impact of a fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage is going to be, both the direct impact on county payrolls, but also the impact on the private sector. You know, that, that there, you know, there's a likelihood that jobs are going to be shed. Fifteen dollars an hour for a forty-hour work week is close to thirty-three thousand dollars a year before benefits for a minimum wage job. That's a pretty hefty price. Impacts of the Kerwin, the current Kerwin proposed mandates for which there is no identified funding stream. We, based on what we know right now and speaking with, with Mike Sanderson, we anticipate that at, at best, the annual recurring cost for Wycomico County is going to be two million dollars a year, and that's recurring. The state also has a extremely underfunded OPEB trust, and if you recall, they had an underfunded state employee pension trust, and the state downstreamed fifty percent of that to the counties. State currently has and is projected to continue to have a structural deficit. I think Laura circulated earlier today an article that had appeared in Maryland Matters where Comptroller Peter Francho urged restraint with respect to spending and is anticipating a, a recessionary cycle. Andy Shoffel was at Mako Summer along with two other preventers, and their loud and clear message was, it isn't if we're going to have a recession, it's when we're going to have a recession. And there were several recession indicators that were disturbing, one of which is the interest rate inversion. So short-term interest rates are higher than long-term interest rates. So the, the, the investment community has sidelined their capital because there's a great uncertainty about the economic cycle that we're, we're entering. So that is going to make, at some point in time, because that capital is sidelined, it's going to make sourcing of funding for capital projects much more difficult. So with that, with all that in mind, we felt that it was appropriate to revisit our fund balance policy. That policy was adopted in nineteen ninety-six. That, 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 that policy doesn't work in today's environment, and we had proposed last year, whenever we sent that over, a seventeen percent targeted fund balance for uncommitted fund balance and continuing with five percent for the rainy day fund. So the two together would be twenty-two percent. Frankly, when we sent that over last year, the seventeen percent, I was fairly comfortable with, I would tell you today that I probably think that's a little light, that if it were up to me, I would urge that we move it, that part of it perhaps closer to twenty percent. Maintain the, the, what we call rainy day fund at the five percent, and to put that into perspective, our operating costs, when you, you clear out all the accounting, takes about, it takes about eleven million dollars a month to run the county. So if we're sitting on thirty-three million dollars between those two funds, that would run us for three months. To put that into context, a fifty-five thousand dollar household wage, which is what our median is, fifty-five thousand, if you were earning fifty-five thousand dollars a month, I mean a year, and you had three months in your savings account and you lost your job, that would be fairly catastrophic. So when people say that we've got too heavy a fund balance, I think that they aren't looking at the perspective of three months' operating capital for the county if something catastrophic were to occur. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have about this, but I, I, I really feel that we should move something forward where we codify a more robust fund balance policy. I think if we don't do that, I think we're going to regret it in the long run.
In the last recession, we cut eighteen to twenty-five percent.
Yep.
You're aware of that, I know.
No, I'm keenly aware of that.
And the seventeen is a, is a minimum target, so, I mean, we can push for more, we don't have to have it set into the policy, but at least, you know...
Yeah, I, yeah, it, it's, you know, we previewed what we had sent you with the three creditorating agencies last year when we went up to New York prior to the bond sale, and, and it was, it was met with very positive feedback. They felt that it was an appropriate move for us to be making.
Are you suggesting, Wayne, that, because everything we have here, of course, talks about a minimum of twelve, maximum of seventeen, are you suggesting that the minimum would be seventeen?
No, what I'm suggesting is that, that we ought to think about, in my opinion, this is just me...
What's the?
I think we ought to think about a, a, a maximum target of twenty, for the unassigned fund balance. The minimum of twelve, I'm, I'm, I'm not too sure I would move that to fifteen.
Or seventeen.
So the thing that I don't think we wanna do, because of the uncertainty, I don't think that we wanna raise the goal too high, because remember, we're using fund balance for one-time capital spending. And we don't wanna put ourselves in a position where, uh, we, we, we can't spend on capital projects that are necessary because it violates our fund balance policies. You know, if it were me, the seventeen and twelve, I could live with. I'm not too sure, though, that I wouldn't urge you to go to twenty and fifteen.
Wayne, you know, when I was reading all this, when it was on the agenda, I guess I was expecting you to come in and want to drop it to twelve. Come up with that, but, um, anyway, um, you know, that's fine. My, my response to that is, is, you know, we caught a lot of grief from the education side because we had too much of a fund balance. And apparently, they don't have much of any, but, um, in a reserve, I don't think, from what I hear. But what they need to be educated on is the reason they get all these projects built, all these new schools and all these renovations, is because we do have a good fund balance, and that looks good in New York when we go to borrow money.
Yeah, the, the, the strong, the strong fund balance offsets, uh, the street's, um, unhappiness with the, uh, the revenue cap. So, I mean, and again, ju- just to put this into broader context, we will exceed our revenue estimates this year, and we'll underspend our expense budget. This is fiscal twenty eighteen. And we should have a pretty good handle on that by the end of September. So we, we will put more money back into fund balance again this year. So you wanna be careful about not building it to too high a level, but we've been living on income taxes. You know, we haven't, our, our, our real property base has not gotten back to its pre-recession levels.
It's going to after they get done obsessing the east side, I guess.
I don't know. So, so what we've been living on, uh, and, and, and the reason that our revenue has grown as much as it has is local income tax. And local income tax has been a function of, of job growth. One of the things that has my attention right now is that the job growth has really leveled out. And a lot of the jobs that have been added are lower wage scale jobs. So I'm, I'm concerned about our income tax receipts leveling out. I'm also concerned that, um, the, the tax return environment in the state of Maryland is pretty fluid right now. Because as you know, Maryland's response to the federal tax code change was, well, if you take the standard deduction on your federal return, you've gotta take the standard deduction on your state return. Well, that generated a lot of money for the state of Maryland. So people, you know, saved money on their federal return because of the reductions, but they paid it to Maryland. Particularly high wage earners, high income earners. And I think, and Andy Shoffel was concerned about this as well. I think we're gonna see the possibility of some real, um, tax return changes in behavior. Uh, so we may have had what the state referred to as a windfall this past year, but that may evaporate next year.
What ramifications will we hear from the state by having an increase or a higher fund balance?
You know, I can't predict that, Joe. Um, you'll, you'll recall, uh, we went into the recession and they restricted HUR money. We, we, we had to find that money someplace, and, uh, the state changed the rules on maintenance of effort, and they adopted a, what I call a carrot and stick policy, where they, well, if you raise your local income tax rate to the state maximum, we'll reset your maintenance of effort. There's already talk at the state level about increasing county's ability to raise their local income tax rate. There's already talk about taking it from three-two to three-five. When the state doesn't have a revenue source for a massive spending program, one of two things has to happen. Either that money's gotta come from some other place. Where's it gonna come from? Eighty percent of our budget is for education, public safety and health. So what's the other revenue source? Income tax increase. It wouldn't surprise me at all if Maryland didn't raise the state income tax rate. So, you know, again, I just think there are things out there that we need to be paying very, very close attention to. I can't predict what they're gonna do about Kerwin. All I know is the three-point-eight billion dollars is not there. And the state comptroller has said it's not there, and the state governor has said it's not there.
Yeah, I think, Wayne, you know, I appreciate your comments. You know, I agree with you, uh, in terms of being, having the foresight to look at these major issues that are in front of us. But I think the twelve to seventeens is, is still pretty appropriate. I mean, you know, I, I mean, if I remember right, the one we've been carrying since ninety-six, was it three percent?
Three.
Yeah, right.
With a goal of five.
Yeah, with a goal of five. So you're going from the three divided to twelve to seventeen. You know, Am- Amherst County was already with the biggest fund balance as a percent of our budget.
As a percent of recurring revenue.
Right. So with all that said, you know, yeah, I mean, whether we're at twelve, fifteen, seventeen, we're still way ahead of our peers, and, you know, and at the bond market, there's any of the, any of those, anywhere, those kind of numbers, you're gonna look at that and say, that's great. You know, so, I mean.
It helps our credit rating tremendously.
Right.
Does that not put a target on our back? I, I would think with the appropriations committee of the state thinking, looking at us and thinking, oh, well, they've got money, why are we covering so much of what they do, you know, and?
Because this money's used for one-time capital expenditures, not for operating costs. I mean, it, I mean, that's an easy one to answer.
Mr. Strasberg, if, so education is the largest division of funding. Am I hearing you correctly, or that's?
The eighty percent of our budget goes to education, which is the Board of Education and Warwick, public safety and health. That's eighty percent of our-
The library.
Yeah, the library is part of education as well.
Okay. And just looking at the Kerwin Commission recommendations.
Right.
I mean, they're, they're suggesting that Wacomico County has one-on-one tutoring for every student in middle school and high school.
I missed what you said.
They would have one-on-one tutoring for every child in middle school and high school to bring them up to reading level and math level. So I think that is gonna be a rainy day. Um, that's gonna, it's definitely gonna cut into that.
You know, one of the, and we're getting a little bit off track here, but one of the, one of the primary concerns I have about the approach being taken on this is that it doesn't seem to address some core issues that we have in our educational system. Wacomico County is one of the poorest, um, counties in the state. So I, I don't, I don't see Kerwin addressing the poverty level a significant part of our student body. We have children who come to school, uh, and, and the only meals they get in a day are the, are the meals that they get at school. So we're, we're, we're not addressing that core issue in this Kerwin study. We're not addressing what I think is a fundamental issue with school discipline. Our disciplinary, um, policies in public education have, uh, have, uh, eroded since the nineteen seventies. I have two daughter-in-laws who are teachers, and they have both said, the money doesn't cause me distress. The fact that I can't discipline a student who needs to be disciplined, and I don't get support from my administrator, my vice principal or principal, is what stresses me out. So if, if we're not going to address these core issues, we're, you know, we're not addressing the raw material. We're not addressing behavioral issues. We're not addressing poverty issues. And I don't think you're gonna significantly change your educational outcomes if you don't address those core issues. And, and, you know, so from my standpoint, you know, I've got a fundamental, um, skepticism, if you will, that, that this is going to make a dramatic change in our student outcomes. Because we're not addressing that kid who comes into school. The only two meals he's getting are the meals he's getting or she's getting at school. We're not addressing for the teachers the behavioral issues that they have to deal with every day. And, and we're not addressing, uh, some of the socioeconomic factors that, you know, quite frankly, are not moving in the right direction. So.
How do you, you know, we can't fix that through Kerwin. You couldn't fix that through any, I mean, there's nothing, there's not much you can do, other than maybe raise the amount of money that individuals are getting paid, which is what they, same reason you're upset about the fifteen-dollar minimum wage. You, you, you got a lot of people, you got a lot of poor folks here. They're poor for a reason. And they can't then turn around to give their, uh, enough, you know, food to their kids. So which is why we're moving in the direction we are with, with the education system. I think, I think you bring up a very good point. We do need to, we need to walk and chew gum at the same time. You know, we need to, we need to both of those situations, and until we do that, I think we're gonna have some of the same similar outcomes, but.
Wayne, can I ask you one question?
Sure. Sorry to get us off.
Yeah, that's all right, that's all right. It's a good topic. I think, you know, Josh, you were talking about the state, and I agree with what you say, and the state's gonna look for any excuse they can to say your balance is too high, but you know, our only argument is that the only thing we can do is learn from our past experiences. And when we went into a true recession, which I think was less threatening at the time than, than what I see now, because, you know, we're looking at a recession now on top of all the issues that Wayne discussed, uh, minimum wage, Kerwin Commission, et cetera, et cetera. So, I, you know, should a recession hit equal to the last one, we could see something as equal as we did with the HUR the last time.
The last recession was a speculative bubble that just exploded.
Sure.
And, and, and if people were paying attention, you could see that coming. I mean, it just made no sense at all. This one, I would call this more structural.
Sure.
That it's not gonna fix itself over time, and I don't know where our funding sources are gonna be.
Yeah, so hopefully, I mean, you know, we recognize the logic. The state doesn't always want to listen to that logic. Yeah, you know that. My one question, though, to, the only question I have is, uh, at the end of this, um, proposed resolution, there is the statement that it, shall become effective immediately upon its adoption. This is an emergency legislation, so I, that's probably one thing I would say we would, we would wanna strike if it were to come back.
However you wanna work, it's fine.
You, you say this fund is used for one-time capital projects. Um, explain what that means. I thought this fund was supposed to be put in a fund to be in reserve, so what did you mean by that?
What I mean by that is that our, our unassigned fund balance, uh, when we, each year when we do the budget show, we fund our capital projects, or over one-time, mainly capital projects, through either borrowing in the bond market or using what we believe to be excess fund balance. And what I'm saying here is, is that I wanna codify how we define excess fund balance. Because right now, excess fund balance is anything over five percent of recurring general revenue, and that's too low a threshold.
So you're saying if we set a rate of seventeen percent, that seventeen percent of that will always remain in a, in a reserve fund and never be used for anything? Other than, other than when?
Unless the executive in the council determines that there's some state of emergency or, you know, whatever. So, so what, what we're trying to do, again, is better define what we consider excess fund balance.
Well.
And what are we right now, give or take?
Give or, I don't, uh, our unassigned fund balance is thirty-two point seven million. Now rainy day is seven point six million, so we've got forty point three million dollars.
So if we, if we were at seventeen percent and five percent, where will we be?
That would take you down, uh,
Take us down or up?
Twenty-five, you'd have twenty-five in unassigned, you'd still have the seven-six, so it'd take you down seven, eight million dollars.
So we're taking it up. So we'll be taking it up. This number would have to come down.
Correct.
So how would we do that in the next fiscal year?
Well, no. It would be over, we'd have more in fund balance than our target goal.
Of seventeen percent.
What we're trying to, yeah.
So how would you, what would you do? How would you drain those funds?
Well, we'd have to decide on that.
Without, uh, maybe lowering taxes possibly.
Wayne, you're, you're borrowing money every single year.
Exactly.
I mean, you just, you don't borrow.
That's true.
You just don't borrow as much money.
Exactly. You could pay down debt.
You could pay down what you have.
But, but again, where we are right now is excess fund balance is a moving target. It's based on whatever your individual opinion is. What we're trying to do is say, no, you know, we've got a codified goal of whatever percentage we decide, and anything above that is considered excess fund balance. So it, 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 it quantifies the term excess fund balance, because right now, it's anything over five percent. Good end of three percent, which, that's foolish.
And it brings up the question again, why, I, I mean, our debt obligations is pretty high. And I'm concerned this, I mean, it's not beyond what's allowed, but as I understand it, it's relatively high, and I'm surprised we have such a debt obligation that's so high when we have the reserves that are also equally as high.
I thought, I thought our debt obligation is actually the lowest percent of all, aren't we?
Uh, we're, uh, we've got a twelve percent P and I threshold. We're right at about ten and a half percent right now.
So we could use this money to pay off, um, some of the higher interest loans.
You could pay down debt if you wanted to. The, the, you know, that becomes an exercise of, okay, what kind of return are we getting on our idle funds versus what would the interest rate be that we would pay? It just becomes math.
Well, you borrow less.
Yeah, it becomes in a given year. Or we could accelerate some capital projects that we know that we need to address. I mean.
Or as John, John says, we could lower taxes. Getting anxiety there.
Well, capital projects, while, while interest is low, I mean, this would make sense, right, to, if we were striking while the iron's hot. Oh, well, we can't really get too much lower if mortgage rates or interest rates do.
Well, I talked, you know, it's interesting. I've talked to several financial experts, if you will, about what they see with the interest rate environment, and, and to a person, they've all said that they still think the Fed is gonna lower the discount rate again, and they don't see any real, uh, increase in the interest rate environment over the next three years. You know.
But still, it looks-
For a guy who came through, you know, the years of Jimmy Carter's pipe inflation and eighteen percent interest rates, I look at, you know, two percent and go, that's almost free money.
Can we still, can we still refinance old debt?
We've looked at everything where it would make sense to refi.
State didn't change that rule, did they?
No, no, no. I mean, we do that every year. We do that every single year.
When, when I started my business thirty-one years ago, interest rates were eighteen and a half percent.
Control is, a lot of farmers back then were on floating loans, like farm credit, farmer's home. And they were at six or seven percent when they borrowed the money for them poultry houses, and it went to eighteen. I mean, it, it tanked a lot of people. If we put this into action, then that sounds to me like that might even help us with this Beaver Run scenario.
It could help us with a lot of things.
Easily.
You know, I, I, you, you know, I mean, if, if we decide, whatever thresholds we decide upon and, and are comfortable with, and we put those in place, then we look at, okay, and I'd like to do this after we have the fiscal eighteen results firmed up.
When? When is that?
I think we'll have, well, the audit, the audit's not gonna be complete till like November. I would think that by the end of September, John, we'll have a pretty good handle on where we've landed, unaudited, but we'll have a pretty good handle.
Plenty of time to be able to configure this for next year's fiscal budget.
And that's what I was gonna say. Then we've got plenty of time to take a look at our capital needs, go back to the CIP, agree if we can as to what we feel our, our idle, um, fund balance is and how it ought to be put to work. And we can incorporate that into the, uh, to the next CIP and the next budget cycle. So there's no, you know, there isn't any urgency associated with this, other than I'd like to see us moving along with it and coming to a consensus as to what the threshold is. ought to be.
Well, I think even Mr. Taylor agrees on this higher threshold.
Well, yeah, and I would point out that the G F O A, I won't go into what that means. I think, Mr., everybody knows, that does the fund balance guidelines. I think Ms. Hurley sent them out to council last week. They're having a seminar, it's a webinar, you can listen by computer, in about three weeks, on setting your fund balance guidelines, how to do what they call a risk analysis.
Okay.
And it might, I think it's a hundred and sixty bucks, if you're not a member. I would think it would be money well spent. And maybe the council and some of the staff would like to just come in and hear, maybe or one of the rooms, and just everybody listen.
When we did this, whenever we did it, we had Davenport actually interface with the G F O A and, and get best practices, if you will. And the G F O A at the time, my recollection is that they determined best practices were anywhere from three months operating cash to six months operating cash. So, as I said, right now, we're above three months, if you take our unassigned and rainy day, we're probably around four months. So, we felt at the time, being, being in the range we were at was probably comfortable. We ran it past credit rating agencies, we ran it past PKS, and, and everybody felt pretty good about it. But that was some time ago, and that's before some of the things that I talked about earlier. So, from my standpoint, I look at it today and say, eh, maybe we should be a little bit more conservative and raise those thresholds. But, I mean, that's valid for...
Yeah, I sent Laura a brochure on that program. Wayne, if you wanna get it.
That's, that's a good idea, Bob. So, Wayne, this work session, of course, and of course, I guess, to some extent, there's an ask as far as how much of this we might agree with, or how much we wouldn't agree with. How is this gonna come back to us, then? Is it gonna come back to us with a fifteen, twenty, a twelve, seventeen? What do you, what do you, what do you think?
Well, I was trying to get some sort of a, and, you know, maybe we wanna wait until...
I'd wait till after that, three weeks, and then you're gonna talk about with risk analysis.
And, and I think we can talk about it more intelligently, after we know what our year-end results are gonna be. I'm, I'm working on, I'm working on a five-year forecast, under certain assumptions. It incorporates things like the Kerwin expenditures, loss of highway user revenue, insurance premiums probably escalating on average eight percent a year. So, we've got a model to crank that in and, and take a look at, okay, what does it look like in each of the next five fiscal years if these things happen? And that'll help us with fund balance policy as well.
Would it be too premature to try to give this back to us, maybe in our, our first or second meeting in October?
No, I think I can, I think I can do that.
First meeting would be October first.
Yeah, I, I think I could have the five-year model by the end of September and a pretty good handle on our fiscal eighteen results, unaudited.
You could just let Laura know, either the first or the fifteenth, we can keep it open.
Yep. The other thing that, and I don't know how you would find this, is what would our risk, I, I mean, we're talking about what other counties do as far as their reserves, but what, is our risk greater than other counties, due to the fact that we are a poor county? Due to the fact that, you know, what, is there anything to that?
You know, what, man, this is...
We're in a greater risk for a hurricane here than, say, Oakland or Garrett County is, or, you know...
Yeah, this is just off the top of my head. I, I, I would say that, and let's look at it a couple of different ways. I would say that our economy is less volatile than the state at large, because, you know, we've got several basics here now. You know, if you lost Purdue, you know, that, that would be a big problem. But, but, but our local economy is a pretty stable economy, albeit, albeit it's a modest economy. So, you know, cyclical fluctuations in our economy don't, don't concern me as much as some downstreaming from the federal and or state government of costs that we just don't have a revenue source for. That's my big concern.
Any other questions? All right, we appreciate you bringing to our attention. We'll see you on the law.
Thank you.
We'll revisit it, not everyone.
Pac fourteen has changed to ta, changed the tapes, about two-minute recess.
Okay. We have a two-minute recess, thank you. Okay, we are back as the, I can't make a county council legislative session two thousand nineteen dash eighteen for September third, two thousand nineteen. We are back in open work session. The next item on the agenda is the procedure for filing a vacancy on the Board of Education. Mr. Taylor, I know you've done some, a bit of research on this, and we'd love to hear your opinion.
Yeah, I guess for, for reasons that Mr. Palmer pretty much hit when he did his public comment, our account, a few minutes ago, I've looked at what could be done, what could be changed, what we do now in terms of filling the vacancy. I think we probably pretty much know what we do now, and that was what he was talking about. And it's a somewhat complex procedure, because it involves a nominating commission that then makes recommendations to the council. And then, as we saw what happened a couple of months ago, that can get hung up in council, and the whole process can take quite a while. There's sixty days for the commission to make its recommendations, the council then has sixty days to act on that. Doesn't have to take all of that time, but let's face it, when you've got a fourteen-member commission, it's probably gonna take a while. It may not take sixty days, but it's probably gonna take at least thirty, and then you're gonna have the time before the council. So, it could be, it's a several-month process, and that's what it was this past time, this year. Now, what I've addressed is that process. I've not addressed what was decided four years ago in the referendum, and that was to have an all-elected council. If you'll remember, back on the ballot then, you really had your three options. You had the all-elected, you had the hybrid, with the five elected, two appointed by council. The third option was to do nothing, essentially keep it the way it was, which was appointed by the governor. I'm not talking about changing any of that. But I would point out that on that ballot, there was nothing that addressed these other issues and matters that we're gonna be talking about here in a few minutes. So, the referendum really didn't cast anything in stone in terms of how you go about filling a vacancy.
Okay.
So, I think we'd have to have state legislation, of course, because this is a matter that's governed by state legislation.
The referendum didn't, but the state legislation did.
Yeah, the, the referendum was pursuant to state legislation to decide which of the three options under the state legislation that the county wanted.
Before we get too far, let me, if we changed anything, would it have to be via a referendum?
It would have to be, I think we'd be fine without a referendum, but it would have to go through the General Assembly.
Without a referendum?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that there's any, because the referendum didn't decide any of these other issues. All it decided was whether we were gonna have all elected, five elected, two appointed by the council, or all appointed by the governor. That was the only thing that was on the ballot.
I've got one quick comment, two for you, two for, when I first saw this, I guess the first thing that came to my mind is, though, why are we limiting this to just the consideration of the school board appointment? We know, we went through similar things with the county council appointment. I mean, there was things that came up during that process as well that are sort of similar. I mean, the timeframe's a little different, but there's a lot of parallelism.
I, I agree. I mean, there are, but of course, that's a matter of charter, that would have to, that's a charter matter, appointment of, to fill a vacancy here on the council. That would have, that could be changed, but it would have to be referendum the next election.
Yeah, something that's something you did keep on the horizon, too. We, you know, we certainly found plenty of issues associated to that process.
It didn't take as long to take care of putting the county council.
I'm not talking just the time part of it. I mean, I'm talking about, you know, the fact, like, like, for example, I can tell you now, I don't like, on the school board side, or on the county council side, I don't like us at the council being boxed in when we haven't made the decision, you know, with candidates. You know, I know, like, on the county council side, I think there was, what was it, Nicole, twenty? Didn't he start with eighteen or twenty applicants, I think?
Probably more than twenty.
There's about twenty-five total.
Right. And we learned, you know, I mean, Republican Central Committee, you know, we get four recommendations, and we gotta pick from four, you know, we don't get to consider six, we don't consider eight or ten, if ten people apply, you know, and, uh...
Well, that's the way it narrows it down. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but did you...
But also, they put three of the four people that were on the Central Committee, they recommended themselves.
Yeah.
Well, I'll tell you, the, the point...
Obviously, it was proven to us that, eh, that system didn't work real well.
And, and you make, you make a very good point, because even the Central Committee was saying to me, hey, there are, you know, there are no real rules here, when they were talking about how they were gonna do a second round. We don't even have any provisions for a second round. The council refuses the first round. So, yeah, there are, there are a lot of areas that need to be addressed with that, and that's also a state issue, too.
Well, anyway, in terms, in terms of what I've, I've looked at, and, and we've prepared kind of a list of what the other counties do, let's start with the nominating commission method, which we have. We're one of three counties that have that. Most do not have any nominating commission at all. It just goes directly to the appointment authority, whatever that might be in a particular county. In some, it's still the governor. In some, it's the council. In some, it's the executive with council confirmation, and then county commissioners, it's a legislative body. So, there's, there's, and of course, we have the legislative body. That's what we have with the nominating commission. So, the first, I guess, issue or matter to discuss would be, do you wanna just do away with the nominating committee? And is there any real need for it? It looks like most counties get by fine without it.
I tell you, to cut to the chase, Bob, I mean, from what you've sent us...
Yeah.
The one line here where it says, "A vacancy is filled by the legislative body, council commissioners, in most counties." Bingo.
Yeah, well, without the commission, you mean, without the nominating commission.
Right, with just the council making that decision.
Yeah, right.
But, what, what's paramount there is that we have to define the search process, and we have to define public input.
Well, as, as far as I can tell, and I haven't spent a lot of time going around and asking the other counties, it's, it, it varies across the board. Some, some, when it comes up, they just ask people to come in and talk if they wanna be on the Board of Ed. Some of them have search, their own search methods. That would be something, obviously, you might wanna look at, if you're gonna do away with the commission.
Right, yeah.
So, that, but nevertheless, the initial threshold issue is whether you wanna do away with the commission or not.
I think we wanted the commission so that we could be more inclusive, or the public could be more inclusive.
Yeah. But it, even they will tell you, it wasn't the best.
Well, I think the main thing we found with the commission was, you don't need two public hearings at the commission level. They had to do two.
And they had problems even getting all the commission members to the meetings to have a quorum.
You know, having one would've been easily sufficient, but you had to do that twice, you know...
And then there's the commission, and they may not have a job to do for ten, twenty years. They may not have any vacancies on the Board of Ed.
Yeah, that's, that's true. I mean, that could happen, and of course, there'd be turnover in the commission in that period of time, a lot, probably. So, that's the first thing, I think, is that. The, the second thing is whether the appointment should be for the full balance of the term or just part of it, and by that, I mean, until the next election. And as you probably know, we did the part full. In other words, if it's the vacancy is filled within a certain time before, before the next election, then that person would serve only for up to about, about two years, depending on when the vacancy occurred. And then he or she would have to stand for election for the final two years of the term, similar, really, to the vacancies on the council again. I've looked at the other counties on that. Most, although not all, the, the appointment is just for the full term, no matter when it occurs during that four-year period. So, that would be the other possible change that, frankly, I think would make sense, but that's up to you all, the ultimate decision.
Well, I agree with you a hundred percent there. I, I definitely, you know, to me, that makes no sense that you appoint somebody. Number one, it gets out of the cycle. I mean, poor Nicole, I sympathize with you, you know, you get appointed, so you have to go through the appointment process, now in a year and a half, you have to run again. And if you got elected, you'd have to run again in two years. Say, well, that makes no sense.
It is hard enough to get people to volunteer for something like...
Yeah, right, you should be pretty experienced, Dad, by the time...
It is hard to get someone to volunteer to serve. So, once you get a school board member appointed that wants to do it, it's...
Well, I always wondered, and I don't know the history of this, if the history was looked into at all, if that was actually the intent. Because when it says the next general, I always wondered if they meant the next general county election, and just didn't put the word in there, because that just didn't seem to make sense to be the next general.
Well, but, but of course, if you wanted it to just be the full term, you wouldn't mention the election at all. Essentially, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to do it. But, but be that as it may, what we have is, right now, is the part full, depending on when the vacancy occurs. And if the thought, you know, well, there are a couple of other things that came, when I looked at some of the other counties' provisions, just a couple of things kind of stood out to me. Number one is, let's see if I can find it here, there could be a situation where somebody doesn't run for a, a seat on the Board of Election. I mean, we have districts, and it's possible, and apparently, that has happened in other counties. And there's no provision in our code right now, I'm talking about the state code now, to address that, and you might wanna add something that that would then be appointed by the council. So that that isn't just a structural vacancy that just lasts for the, until the next election, which would be four years. So, that would be one thing that could be added, I think, pretty easily. The other thing that just occurred to me would be, if you have a vacancy and it's almost the end of the four-year term, is it really worth filling it? And I say that because if it's within, oh, say, about six months of the end of the term, you're going to have people running for election. It would be a fairly short period, and should council have the option to just not make an appointment? In other words, just let that time period run.
And that's a good reason, because if you did appoint somebody that was running, that would give them an edge on anybody else that...
Couldn't you just have, use the filing deadline as a, as like a date, because the people have already filed, and then after the filing deadline, then you get a vacancy.
Right.
So, you might as well now just wait till the election.
Right. Yeah, I think that would be a good cutoff point, and, and obviously, if for some reason, if the board came in and said...
At six months out, you're gonna have people file for that election anyway.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I think they have to file, what, in February?
So, what might be that timeframe, Mr. Taylor? What do you think it would be?
Well, when, when's the filing deadline this coming election?
It's January, it's January, February.
It's January, isn't it?
Is it January?
I was thinking it was February.
Two thousand and eighteen was January.
It, it, it would be eight or ten months ahead of the general election.
It was right before February, is the end, I believe.
So, the board could possibly go almost a year without their representative?
They wouldn't have to. I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, just allow the option of not appointing anyone.
That's what I mean, though. If we didn't appoint someone, then they might be, have that vacancy for almost a year?
Well, they might, and, and I guess if the board came in and said, "We'd really like to have that vacancy filled," you could go ahead and do it. But, I mean, it doesn't seem to me, and of course, that's a worst-case scenario, eight months. More likely, it's gonna be two or three months, or four months, not always going to be eight or ten months. So, that would just be my thought, that it, why not let it just ride out, and the vacancy would essentially be filled by election at the next election.
I, I mean, I have to say that I would, if that was my district, I would be very upset that I didn't have representation. Even if it was six months, three months, I mean, I, I would not, I would be very upset by that.
That's a good point.
Well, I mean, it's, it's up to you all. It just occurred to me that...
It's an option to consider, but you're right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And, and it could be shorter than that. It didn't have, wouldn't have to be the filing deadline. It could be, say, three months before the end of the term.
Maybe three months.
There needs to be some kind of minimum because the process could take 60 days or something.
Exactly, and that's...
But, yeah, the filing date might be a bad date, it might be a bad, it might be too early.
So what would you think, three months before?
That's probably more reasonable, you know.
Yeah, I mean, because...
Three to six months kind of thing.
Yeah, as Mr. McCain points out, if somebody left and it was three months, by the time you appointed someone, it would be probably, probably a month left.
They'd go to one meeting.
Yeah, or a week left.
And you have to consider if we do have a nomin, another nominating committee, because they have their deadline to produce.
Well, it would, yes, it would cut it down, certainly, if you didn't have a nominating committee, but nevertheless, it's going to take some time, because you're going to have to wait a certain amount of time for people to apply, and then you're going to have to interview them and make your decision. So that's probably going to be a, what, 30-day at least process? So we can, we can put something in there if you want us to.
By the way, who were the three people that dominated yourselves? What was the question?
Julie.
They're talking. Julie McGyver.
Joe McCann.
Joe, Joe's not on the Central Committee, Joe was elected. But three.
Larry, go ahead.
Right, and, well, since you brought that up, Joe, I'm on the, I'm on the Central Committee, yes, and those candidates that we chose, some of them didn't even live in the district, so we weeded a lot out before we got to the top.
Not the ones you chose, the ones that applied.
That's what I meant, but the ones that the committee chose from that list. But I have a question, Bob. When you were doing this research, did you come across any jurisdictions that had special elections?
I don't think so on this. I don't believe so.
I know Councilman McCain said we feel boxed in, and we truly do. We're making decisions that it really affects people personally when, I think, the public, the district should be voting for these people. That's just my opinion.
I mean, on, on the counties that have it, where it's just part of the term, if it occurs, if the vacancy occurs early, that's kind of like a special election. Follow what I'm saying, because it would be a minimum of two years, I mean, if the vacancy occurred the day after the person took office, then where it's one of the part full counties, the election would be approximately two years. So it's, it's kind of like a special election. I mean, special elections cost money.
Yeah.
That's another thing to bear in mind, I mean, all of this.
But there are jurisdictions across country that have them.
Oh, there probably are, I don't think there are any in Maryland, for the Board of, for the Board of Education, yeah.
So would that mean if, if we were to look at the formal vote, I mean, replacement being made at the ballot, does that mean that our role, taking into consideration everything you said tonight, if we were to take on that responsibility as opposed to a commission, our role would only be in effect for one year and nine months possibly of any given year maximum?
Well, it would depend on whether we're going to go to the system where the appointment is for the full term.
Okay, so...
And, for example, in this one we've just done, it would be for, what, three and a half years, roughly?
So if it weren't for a full term, then it would be by special, I mean, by, as Larry suggested, with a special election?
No, it would be the next, just the next general election that the county's having.
Every two years.
Having elections every two years, so...
Right, so that's the point then. Then our role would be every one year and nine months is the only window where we would take, take part in this.
If you had that three-year, no three-month window.
If we went through that three-month, if we did not act three months before an election, that would mean that this whole premise would be within that cycle of a one year and nine months.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not following your math, yeah.
Anytime that we would take action, have to be between...
That's why you shouldn't go beyond two hours, that's what happens.
I'll leave it for another day.
But, I mean, that would be, if you want to go with the three months, because the procedure here is we're going to have to propose legislation for the General Assembly, and I think probably what we want to do is contact our local representatives in the General Assembly and see how they want to do this. Do they want us to just kind of give them a punch list of things that we want? They then go through the drafting? Do they want us to suggest actual text?
I think they would like to see, I think they would like to see a draft or a multiple draft for them to choose from.
I think so, too. I mean, that would...
I don't think they want to do, do our work.
Yeah, and, and I think it would...
Oh, absolutely.
It would be less slippage if we did it that way as well.
Is it going to require on our part as a council, univote by resolution or by, with a legislative bill?
I think we should have a resolution, W., on that. The council should request.
Not by legislation, because you're not changing the county code, you're changing state law. But if you want to have a resolution, kind of agreeing to, you know, the proposed state language, then we can do that.
Yeah, just, just requesting that they make these changes, and we could have as part of that resolution, the exact language.
Then we will probably be asked to have a public hearing on it, as we were before when we were trying to...
Oh, yeah, there's, there's no doubt they will ask for a public hearing.
Yeah, well, that's fine, you can have a public hearing.
So we'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting as another work session, maybe with a more formalized idea of what we want to do. I mean, I know what I'd like to see done already, coming with what you've given us, but, you know, there's, there's, there's other people I think that need to...
Right. I have a question, too. Is, I mean, are there a lot of people running for the school board? It seems like it's not, I mean, I know there was only one person that ran for the school board in my district. It didn't seem like it was like a, we're vying for this job, and I don't know, I...
That's why I think we're the important part of what Bob just suggested, in case nobody runs, that appointment can be made, yeah.
Yeah, because it was a couple of days before, I was watching my district and a couple of other districts, and we, I thought for two districts, I thought that there's no one, literally no one running. I remember we had to tell the people to put out emails to say, hey, you can do this, you know, we need people...
Yeah.
One district had three.
They all signed up in one day, in one 24-hour period.
Oh, God, well, I lost my train of thought. Oh, while we're discussing this, whether it's another work session, I wouldn't mind hearing from people like Board Member Palmer and hear what their griefs are, and maybe they have some ideas.
And we didn't, we didn't talk to Ben Brumley about this either, but I know Ben is definitely looking for solutions.
Yeah, maybe they have some ideas, maybe they've heard from the public.
Yeah, well, would it, and, and I think that's a good idea, don't get me wrong, in fact, I was going to suggest it, but if we could draft something up and send it to them, or do you want to wait and hear from them and then draft something up? I mean, which...
Well, I think it would give us a lot of input for, for our next work session, so yes, I think if we could draft something up...
I think that would be...
Let them know it is strictly, you know...
Yeah, I think that would move it along.
We might need one, two weeks, and you think we have to do it after the next...
That might be true, if we're waiting for them to respond.
Get them a little time, get back.
All right, then we could, well, I just want to make sure that this is something that we can get to an apposite time, by, by, what, November, December?
I'm not sure that deadline right now, I have to look that up.
And also by our legislative meeting, our next, our meeting in December?
We have a, yeah, the legislative breakfast, September 21st.
Oh, so we're going to miss that deadline, but, either way...
No, I think, I think that's a good idea, and you do want to get it in on both sides of the General Assembly.
Maybe we'll look at the first meeting, the first meeting in November, we'll bring this back as a work session to vote on the second meeting in November, and then by December, we can get it to the legislature.
That may be cutting it a little close, Laura.
I think it'd be a good idea to at least mention it to our state legislators at the legislative breakfast, so give them a heads up that it's coming.
And let them, let them make us aware of what our deadlines are?
Oh, they'll do that.
I have to research that.
Yeah, take a look at that, because that's, that's an important deadline.
Well, as long as you get it out as soon as possible, then we'll check it on the agenda as soon as possible for another work session.
Okay, yeah, I mean...
About John Smith with the Education Association, maybe Cluvin-Her.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good, yeah, the La Comica County Education Association, La Comica County Board of Education, and...
To council of...
And the president of the current commission, Mr. Brumley. Anybody got any other thoughts on that, anybody else?
I would say the CCAP.
Nah.
The C, I would say the CCAP committee.
They don't have a role in the work.
The CCAP committee, we have to have a, the county has to have, on the commission for education, you have to have someone from, or someone with special needs. I don't know if there is someone on the committee?
CCAP?
But CCAP is in the committee for...
Have you sent us an email, an email on what that is? I'm not sure you found one.
They got, just sent an email.
If you, if you want that to go out there, sure, just let Laura know.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor, really appreciate this, taking the time and the trouble and work. Last item on the agenda, letters of support, all those in favor?
What's that?
There are two letters of support, one is the Municipal Bond Market Support Act of 2019, I'm assuming you've read it, we're just simply trying to get a consensus as to whether or not you want to approve, your approval of sending out that letter of support?
Sure.
Everybody good?
Yeah, all good.
And the second one is the St. James Amiens Island Church for a Grant. Everybody good?
Yeah.
All right, entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Thank you.